Okay, I'll order our special city council workshop. Topic of budget.
I am going to go through some of the highlights or big picture items. Of course, you have the agenda packet that has the budgets for each department, each fund. We sent you separately the spreadsheets on the employees payroll. And leading up to this, we've sent you various documents as well. For lack of a better term, I'd call this year the employee. We have to invest in our human capital. We are fortunate we've got quality workforce, but to continue to retain that quality workforce and to attract others, I think it's getting more and more important for us to look at setting fifteen dollars as minimum wage for a full-time employee, as we previously discussed. And every time you look on the internet, some other company is looking at going to a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour or higher. It's becoming very commonplace. Many of them even offering sign-on bonuses and education assistance. It seems like every time a Central Oklahoma Police Department, Fire Department advertises for jobs, we lose somebody. The, with our current wage structure, the pool of applicants that we see when we advertise open positions, in many cases, is very thin and under. And to be honest, in many cases, lacking in quality. Critical vacancies within our workforce. Communication officers, we only got seven positions, we got four openings. So, half of our positions are vacant. The over half, Public Works, we got nine open positions, and we've got four in police officers. And that doesn't count for our constant turnover and the cost and time of recruiting and training.
How many do we have under fifteen bucks? Do you know what? Top of your head? Close, round about?
I'm gonna have to go back and recount that spreadsheet. But I would say at least twenty or more. I didn't recount them. On the municipal budgets, to go through this, this is the summary of the municipal budget. And in the current year, not our budget, but our estimate for current year, our expenditures is seventeen million. And our revenue seventeen million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand. So, our revenue exceeds our expenditures by one hundred and twenty-three thousand. And so, our fund balance started the year at two point six. And our fund balance ending this year, we're projecting to be two million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand. If we remember back about four or five years ago, that was about four hundred thousand. So, we've come a long ways. And those are funds that are balanced that's not budgeted. So, that money is sitting there in case we need it. So, it does provide a safety net if we do have a downturn in the economy. The proposed budget this year, eighteen point eight million in expenditures, eighteen eight hundred and sixty-one thousand in revenue. So, our revenue and expenditures, the way we have it budgeted, it's almost an equal budget. Again, our fund balance won't go down, but we are moving some money to the stabilization fund that makes part of that look a little less robust than normally. In our budget...
Are you gonna dive into each one of those later?
Each one of?
Those departments?
I am nodding listeners questions.
I got a question on economic development. What's the jump there?
Economic development, what happened there was our TV tech had been under HR. And if you notice, HR goes down. And TV tech used to work under Mr. Auger. He now works under Justin Fortney. So, we moved him from the Human Resource Budget to the Economic Development Budget.
Just a shift? Just a shift?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Other questions I might answer?
What about fleet maintenance? Why is it double?
Police, which one influence?
Fleet, fleet maintenance?
Oh, fleet maintenance? I'm trying to remember why fleet maintenance went up so much. Okay. You're right. What, on that particular one, and it'll happen on some others as well, because this is estimated, not budgeted. Where we had open positions in Public Works, we allowed Tenny to take sixty percent of that revenue and move it over to the Equipment Fund. And we'll be going through that to buy equipment, and then leave forty percent of it in the General Fund. So, some of these are reflecting where we have made transfers. And we will spend less because we had open positions. If I had showed the fleet maintenance budget instead of their estimated actual, the difference wouldn't be as much.
Yeah, their budget was one sixty-six, one hundred and sixty-six thousand.
But their actual?
But the estimate.
Ninety-nine because of vacant.
Vacant sixty-nine.
On the budget includes a revised pay plan for the non-bargaining. Fifteen dollars is the minimum wage for a full-time employee, and that includes pay steps adjusted based on a year's service. If you adjust your pay plan up to fifteen dollars and you're basically starting over because the old pay plan had become non-functional, well, if somebody's been here ten years, they can't make fifteen dollars, the same as the new person coming in. So, you had to adjust them accordingly. So, we have made those adjustments. The impact, and this is not just General Fund, but across all funds for non-bargaining, to do that with the increase in salary, retirement, and FICA, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars increase in the budget from last year to this year. With the Fraternal Order of Police and the International Association of Firefighters, eight percent COLA with merit step increases. And bear in mind, what we proposed is twelve percent COLA over a four-year period, but we're front-loading it the first year at eight percent, and it'd be two percent in the next two years. But for this year, that eight percent FOP in the General Fund, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand if you round it off, and firefighters in the Fire Fund, just over two hundred and ten, one thousand dollars. And if you increase the salaries, we added ten percent to all the overtime budgets. That's another roughly forty thousand. And we'll get into it later, but our healthcare insurance went up a little over nine percent. So, that's another eighty thousand dollars that's been incorporated into the budget. On the revenue side, again, I'm just doing the big picture items. The two big jumps in revenue from twenty-one to twenty-two, the compensated use tax and sales tax revenue. I tried to go through that. I give history of sales tax, and you can see that the last two years, nine point three percent right now was set at about eight percent increase over the prior year. But in eighteen, we were up nine percent, and the next year, down seven percent. Sales tax is very volatile. And if the economy slows down or shuts down, it can make a dramatic change in sales tax revenue. This year, current budget year, we budgeted five point six. And it looks like our revenue will be five million, nine hundred and forty-six. So, we had three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted. We, in the budget document we have, we're transferring that to the General Fund Stabilization Fund. We're already at the million dollars for that fund, but this will give us more, and that will give us some additional safety net in case we see dips in sales tax revenue or substantial increase in health insurance costs next year. We have some funds to absorb that.
Does that go into the GPA one as well?
We, we do have, that particular sales tax only goes, we only put it in the General Fund. But both funds are at the million dollars.
Right.
The, the other reason to do this is in applying for USDA grants. If our general fund budgeted balance gets too big, something we never thought we'd hear in Guthrie, you've got too much money, you're not eligible for a grant. But they look at the General Fund, so we don't want to keep too much of a balance in the General Fund because it makes us ineligible for those grants. But we are projecting, sorry, hit the round button. We're projecting a five percent increase next year as compared to the nine and eight percent. We're projecting eight percent for next year, six hundred and forty-three thousand. And that's why sales tax revenue, if you see what we budgeted, twenty-one versus twenty-two. And same way in use tax, it's been growing leaps and bounds the last few years. Revenue in excess of what we budgeted, we, we budgeted eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. We're projecting we'll get a million and three, that additional hundred and nine. Again, we're transferring that. So, we're, with sales tax and use tax, we're putting almost four hundred, a little over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a safety net over into the stabilization fund above and beyond what our ordinance requires. And then next year, if you look, we've been growing anywhere from twenty-two percent to fifty-nine percent. We projected a ten percent growth next year in increase in use tax. And I'd be glad to stop at any time. Transfers, out of the General Fund, we transferred this year a hundred and five thousand dollars, and that's going towards paying for the property that we acquired recently at the airport. Transfer to grant funds, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That is the CARES Act money that we, the majority of the CARES Act money, we received this budget year, and that's going for matching funds for the fire truck and for our Highland Hall renovations. And then transfer to capital equipment. That is money from like we just talked about in fleet maintenance and other positions that are open and places where Tenny didn't have to buy as many materials. So, that is sixty percent of basically the surplus that he had left over in this year's budget. We're transferring that to the Equipment Fund for him to buy equipment. And I've got a spreadsheet to show you that, what equipment we're buying with these different funds. And then the four hundred and fifty-six, five oh two is the sales and use tax that we just talked about that's being transferred to the stabilization fund. And then next year, to add it so that we'll actually have six hundred and fifty-six thousand after next year in the stabilization fund above the million. What we did is one time where you can use American Rescue Funds for Fire and Police, we took a hundred thousand and put it in a General Fund for Police this year to free up a hundred thousand of General Fund money. We put a hundred thousand in the Fire Fund to free up less transfer from the General Fund. So, that gave us two hundred thousand dollars that way. Additional money we could put into the stabilization fund to give us a good safety net. In case with all the, we're being a little aggressive. I like to be conservative with our forecasting this year. I want to make sure we got a safety net to cover us. This is Tenny's equipment. You have it at your desk, but there's other equipment we need to buy, but this will pay for eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars of equipment that Tenny presented to you at the workshop, planning retreat workshop we had. Out of FEMA reimbursement that we got, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars is where part of that money will come from. The Land and Water Conservation Fund, reimbursement that we got for in-kind labor on the Miller Wells Park Project. Money out of the motel tax that goes towards parks. We had some money there we used to buy two mowers, and I think if, Justin has posted some pictures of them on Facebook. USDA, we're getting a grant to match the money for the street sweeper, ninety-four thousand. It's been approved, we haven't had the paperwork yet. And then this year, it looks like we'll get another USDA grant for forty-five thousand to help pay for a, another piece of equipment. Yep. And then money that we saved from salaries in the various General Fund and Public Works that Tenny managed, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then a hundred and eighteen thousand out of various operating counts where he didn't buy his money, materials, those kind of things. And then out of the American Rescue Plan, we're supposed to get between one point nine to two million dollars. And we're gonna take ninety thousand of that to go towards the purchase of a valve machine so that if you have a leak, and you don't have shut-off valves, you can go on both sides of that leak, you can actually insert valves to shut it off so that you can fix it quicker and you don't have to shut our system down to shut that up. So, that's where Tenny is getting the funds to buy over eight hundred thousand dollars of the equipment. Of course, there's more that he needs. We, we always have more needs, and we have money, and we'll continue to look for other funding sources, but this is a big chunk. That's kind of the highlights of the General Fund. When I get done, we can go into specific departments if you want to. Now, I'm just gonna show some highlights of the Public Works Authority, which is our, what most people call enterprise funds that are supposed to be operated more like a business. And you can see, our estimate expenditures and revenue are pretty close to the same this year. But we will end with a two point three million dollars of money that's not budgeted, that's there in reserves. And in FY twenty-two, we are projecting that our revenues will exceed our expenses by two hundred thousand. So, our net fund balance setting in reserves would go to two point five. So, if you add that to the General Fund, two point seven, that's five million dollars of unbudgeted money that's sitting there in reserves. So, our financial position is not great, but we're in pretty good shape. Public Works Authority, the American Rescue Plan on revenues, you'll see nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That may be as much as a million. We should get half the money in the next thirty to sixty days, and then the other half will come sometime next spring or summer. And they have just now started the process to, for us to submit the paperwork to get the American Rescue Act money that comes directly to municipalities that are under four hundred thousand. Water collections, we have by ordinance set it up every year based on the Consumer Price Index. How much that index goes up, that's how much our water rates go up. Consumer Price Index this year is a little over five percent. So, water rates will go up five percent, which would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand additional revenue. The sewer rates, same thing, additional seventy-two thousand. And then we're in discussions on our trash rates, and if we do it across the board or some format of a ten percent increase there, that will generate a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of additional revenue. And I know that's not been adopted, but we're forecasting that that will, at least part of that will occur this year. To talk about that in more detail, if you look at the trash rates based on the different groups, our bill, and I just took one bill, and then I took it times twelve, a little over a million dollars per year, we can analyze that one bill. And our revenue's one point four. So, our net revenue is four hundred thousand. Our margin's twenty-eight percent. When I did that, when I took a bill and actually did it, I thought it was interesting. There is a state fee based on timings that we really don't have built into our rate structure. So, that should be incorporated into our rate structure. And then residential, we basically, we have a thirty-eight percent markup or margin on the residential customer, but on our commercial customers, we only got twenty-four percent. Seems like that's a little skewed.
It'd be flipped, you'd think.
You'd think that that would be fixing with having sure. So, when this goes to the Finance Committee, hopefully later this fall, and they consider our rate structure for trash, they look at that, and if they propose an increase, they may propose more increase on the commercial side than they do on the residential side. And so, we will let the Finance Committee work through that, come back with the recommendation. But I didn't even go back to two thousand and six, or this would be more, I got the numbers now, but start two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven, our invoice, our cost from waste connections is went up ten point six. Again, we've not had a rate increase since two thousand and six, and that was a twelve percent increase. If we did a ten point six percent increase, it would generate an additional one hundred and forty-six thousand. Again, the mix may change. We even have three companies that there is no markup. And that may be something the Finance Committee wants to look at. They only pay what is charged by waste connections, and there is no markup on our side whatsoever for those three companies. I'm not sure the history of that and why that took flight. Again, if you look at our current rates at thirteen, twenty-four for residential one time a week, and even if you did the ten percent increase and went to fourteen, sixty-five, you're still below Kane Fisher at sixteen dollars, Chalk Call at nineteen, Stillwater at twenty, Cassin at twenty-one, and Perry at twenty-two. So, even if we did a ten percent increase on residential, we'd be very competitive compared to many of the surrounding communities. Under transfers in the Public Works Authority, next year, a hundred thousand to the General Fund for Police, and then a hundred thousand on the third line to General Fund, or to the Fire Department Fund. And I explained, we'll be using that to free up money to go to stabilization fund, to increase our stabilization fund to roughly one point six million. Again, we're transferring more funds, a hundred and fifty this year, a hundred and five this year to go towards purchasing the property to airport and future airport grants, our share of the FDA grants, building up money so that we have that for our grant match. And then out of the American Rescue Plan, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the water loan grant that we just got, that I sent you an email on last week. And then this is the amount that was transferred for Public Works to buy equipment out of the Public Works Authority. Those are kind of highlights, are big picture of our two major funds, and where we'll be at the end of this year, where we'll be next year with the budget we've done with the salary increases, insurance increase, some of the revenue enhancements that we talked about. Be glad to go into specifics on individual funds. We have department heads here, they could probably answer even in more detail than I can, relative to their own budgets, but we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Question for the conference.
Can't get a motion in this meeting?
No. Next one we can.
I got a few Fire Department questions.
Yes, sir.
And, let me find it. An EMS.
You page.
We've had twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand worth of professional services, and then we're wanting ninety-nine thousand, like four times as much.
And Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that has to do with our EMS bill.
Last year, the company we're currently with changed how they took their share and didn't fully tell us. Previously, we paid them, actually wrote them a check every month for their services, for their portion. Now, they start holding like this credit card payment from the insurance company, and they hold their share back, and we're not as the difference.
But our new company will do it the other way, where we'll actually pay them. So, in, our revenue went up, but our expenses went up because we hadn't incorporated that in, whereas before, those expenses and revenue didn't go through our books.
If you look back on a couple, two, three, four years ago, at previous stages, you'll see if that number was much higher back when we actually paid them.
Did that address that question?
Yeah, yeah. When you, when you look at the numbers, you'll know why.
I understand.
And then chemicals and ambulance supplies, are we gonna use fifteen thousand more this year than we did last year?
We're happening to order a bunch of EPE right now because the shortages have already started, the masks and everything else.
With the COVID stuff, I got you. Did you have something to ask?
No, I have something to ask about the vehicle maintenance. In twenty-one, your budget was sixty-two point five and your actual estimate was forty-five, so that's a good sign.
Which does?
And the vehicle.
As EMS.
Which one?
Sixty-three, sixteen.
EMS.
EMS, EMS. We got to do a trust, so.
So that lowered, so you're estimating back up to sixty-five for the next year?
Yeah, because they're all out of warranty already.
Okay.
Didn't take a year.
Yeah, a year.
The library salaries estimated went from ninety-nine, or I'm sorry, went from one ninety-five to two forty-nine, is that vacancies also?
There's five positions in the library, they're full-time, two part-time. They were our lowest paid positions, so when we went to fifteen dollars an hour minimum, that was a significant bump for them.
Good bump.
Yes, and deserved.
Yep, okay.
How about economic development salary, forty-three point five to one hundred?
Okay.
Since that's going, are you, are you adding somebody to that?
Our TV technician.
Aaron.
We moved, yes.
Yep, yep, yep. I remember. Thank you. I'll try to remember all this, but it's, gives me a headache. I've got notes everywhere.
It just, doing the spreadsheets wears you out.
I think you put together a pretty solid budget.
Yeah, I do too.
My opinion.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
And the one thing everybody needs to realize is these can change over the course of time.
Correct, there can be adjustments and, and we have set it up to make sure we have resources to adjust where we need to, depending on the economy. We think it's a pretty solid budget, it's a balanced budget, our revenues exceed our expenses and I think it allows us to continue to move forward. It will provide a revenues or a income source for our employees that will reward some of our employees that have been here a number of years and hopefully make us a little bit more attractive as an employer to recruit people. And we continue to look for opportunities for grants to do projects and buy more equipment. As you all expressed a couple of years ago, we're trying not to tap the three-quarter cent sales tax for capital infrastructure to buy equipment, we're trying to find other sources. And we've done that through using surplus that we, every year from the general fund that we didn't spend, plus grants. We may, it's been a couple of years since we bought a police car. At some point, we may want to discuss using some of our unfunded budget balance to maybe buy a couple more police cars, keep that rotation going, but we'll bring that and justify it later during the budget year. Right now, with the situation, cars, you can't even order a police unit.
Yeah, lots are out to them.
Yep. But later, maybe next spring, when it opens up, we may come to you and propose using some of our unfunded budget balance to do a budget amendment and move money in to buy a couple of police cars.
Can we sell that then?
We will, we do have some of the surplus.
I think we've got a lot of surplus.
Yeah, we do have some.
Harlow looks like he's collecting them down there.
We just keep buying them, you pile them up.
He needs new garage.
Housing demolition, the demolishing of houses that are unsafe, what account does that come out of?
That comes out of the planning.
Because.
And there's fifty-five thousand.
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Is that still planning for about ten?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we try to average because we figure around five thousand, around five thousand, four to five thousand per square. So that's why we have around forty-five thousand. But then we also have the separate for weed abandonment, which I think is fifteen thousand.
See, I'd be open to adding.
So I would definitely.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's the thing is if we have more money, we can take care of more houses.
And we could do that by a budget amendment.
I'd like to make that bigger.
I have to do it in this core budget, it could be amended.
Yeah, we can amend it or whatever, we're making some good progress.
What we could wait and do is if you'd like to do more, is when we get our list this year, condemn, instead of ten, do fifteen or twenty.
Yeah.
And then see how much money it costs us when we put out for bids and then we could do the budget amendment based on the bids.
And then like if you didn't have Dan's salary, we could do twenty-five?
Maybe thirty.
Okay.
So, so then what we'll do is we'll do, maybe do twenty this year, put them out for bids once they're condemned and then based on what our bids are, then we can look at doing a budget amendment.
Yeah, because even last year.
And then we'll just amend based on the price.
And then, you know, again, figure two, so we'll increase it to like twenty.
Yeah, good, that's good, good idea, good plan. Here's a question.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Roy.
Yes, sir.